When I call for a yes or no vote, just please raise your hand. I'll look left first, then I'll look right. And if it's unanimous, Susan can see the hands. If there's a no vote, make sure you turn your mic on and vote no or whatever you have to vote, okay? So for Bob Harris, where is on the phone, we're trying to get him back. Otherwise, everybody is here.
Marty, I am here.
Oh, there you go, Bob. Thank you. So we have the pledge coming up. Would the scouts like to lead the pledge? I would appreciate it. Turn around, there's the flag. Why don't you guys start and we'll go after your call.
To the flag of the United States of America. To a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Going on to the consent agenda, it's just a motion or approval of the minutes or the previous minutes. Any motion?
So, so moved.
Well, actually Alderman Platner raised his hand, but Alderman Benning, are you doing the second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Mayor's business, moving around, I have nothing. Staff report, engineers report, Rob?
No report.
City planner, do you have a report?
Just an update with plan commission, there'll be four items on Thursday's agenda. And as of now, only one item for the next common council meeting, and that includes a public hearing. And that is for the conditional use for auto repair and used cars, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Susan, you're up.
After a quick survey of the alderpersons and yourself, we've determined what the dates for the common council meetings will be for the rest of 2021. We're focused on the dates that are in conflict due to the two elections we now know we'll be having. So the February 16th council meeting will be moved to Wednesday, February 17th at the same time at 7:30. And the Tuesday, April 6th council meeting will be moved to Wednesday, April 7th. Also a reminder that the July council meeting, there is one held the first Tuesday of July. We will be holding that one on Tuesday, July 6th. And the rest are as, as always, each.
Very good.
Each year.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions for Susan?
I'll get those posted.
Thank you. Okay, public appearances and comments, if there's anybody here, we usually give you three minutes. We have a new podium over there. Anybody in the audience for public appearances and comments? Anybody on the phone for public appearances and comments? I guess there's none. We'll move on to finance and licensing. All right. Yep, we'll go back. I'll do public appearances again. So I guess we have no sound. Again, public appearances and comments, on the phone or in the audience. Hearing and seeing none, move on to standing council committees, finance and licensing.
Yep, first is consideration of possible action on the amendment to the fire services contract with the town of Port Washington. It did come in a little bit higher than what was budgeted. We budgeted $110,000 for it, but the base charge will be $112,799, even though there was a 4%, 4.6% decrease from 2020. I imagine it's primarily due to the increased value, valuation of the city and the town, led to a higher multiplier. So we're just asking for an additional $2,799.48. The finance committee did approve this downstairs.
Okay.
I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Who's got the motion?
I'll, I'll move to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
Those all in turnip. Okay, any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Seeing it unanimous again, Susan. Okay, Jonathan, move on to number two.
Next would be consideration of possible action on the city ordinance for the elimination of the summer sewer credit for 2021. And consideration and possible action, oh, that's the next agenda item. So just the summer sewer credit, I guess, Mr. Bueller, if you wouldn't mind taking this one.
Okay. We brought this to the Board of Public Works within the last week, week and a half, and they approved it. We brought it to the licensing committee, finance and licensing committee tonight, and they approved it. Basically, what we're looking for is to revise the city ordinance to just allow single-family residential and duplex customers to add a deduct meter to their residence. This would be the only way they could get a credit on water going onto their lawns. Currently, we've got a system in place that's, that's based on an assumption. Anything over winter usage is considered going on, going on your lawns. In some situations, that's probably accurate. In other situations, potentially it's inaccurate. For example, if they're going away in the wintertime and and if they have a falsely low winter average, they're basing their summer usage off of that winter average. You would get an extra high credit. Or, for example, if they have kids coming home from college in the summer, adding to their usage, that would be considered possibly going on the lawn and an extra high summer credit. So there's only really two communities in the area that still have it, other than us. It's Cedarburg and Mequon locally. Over the years, other communities in the area have eliminated this program. So we're asking that it be implemented in 2021. In addition, we're, within the next week or two, we'll be asking for a 3% increase. If the council does not approve of the elimination of summer sewer credit tonight, most likely we'll be asking for a 5%, 5.5% rate increase for 2021.
The finance committee did approve this downstairs a little while ago for myself. I like that this is gonna, you know, net us between $50,000 and $60,000, $50,000 to $60,000 of increased revenue that we're not getting right now, not to mention the city staff time that's spent looking through and parsing through the summer sewer credit to obtain those. So I think this just makes everything a lot more equitable for everyone who uses the city's services. So thanks for your efforts on this, Dan.
Any questions for Dan, anybody?
I guess I would. I guess I would move to approve the, oh, sorry, pardon me.
I have a question. Are we approving for city staff to create an ordinance? Or is this considered a first reading?
I can answer that question. So it would be to repeal the ordinance language related to the summer sewer credit program. So what we would do as a result of this body, if it so chose to adopt the elimination of the program, staff would work with the city attorney to draft that ordinance amendment. And that would come before this body at the next meeting on February 2nd. An item also that would be a companion piece to this would be the increase in the rates. And as Dan mentioned, it would be 3% instead of 5.5%. So the first reading would be at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Alderman Platner, do we have a second? Alderman Tierney? Any more discussion on this? I would just say thanks, Dan, for your effort. It's, like Alderman Platner said, it's a logical thing to do, it really is. You know, if you use the water, you pay for it. Okay, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Seeing it unanimous. All opposed? Was John, you're in the end, you were okay with it? I didn't see it. Perfect. Okay, again, Susan, unanimous.
Next is consideration of possible action on the 2020 street project change order number one, Rob?
Sure, I'll go over briefly. Two went to the Board of Public Works last week, Tuesday, and was just approved by the finance. This is essentially a housekeeping item on the 2020 street improvement project, which is, which was completed in September. Two unforeseen items that, that were taken care by Vizu Sewer. Those are the first two items you see on the change order. The second and the third one is essentially a revision in the unit price based on a 33% reduction in the quantity we use for water service. So even with that price adjustment, the, the overall decrease to the, to the cost of that item was 52,000, over $52,000. So this, this change order is a, is a deduct to the original contract price of $48,000, which brings our revised contract price to $2,021,000. So we're coming in a little bit under budget on this, on this project for 2020.
I'll move, I'll move to approve that change order.
Second.
Alderman Platner and Alderman Gasper. Again, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand, or, okay, yeah, aye. Okay, unanimous again, Susan. Moving right along. Tony's got to put his kid to bed.
Hi. Next is consideration of possible action, the SEH agreement to create a risk and resiliency assessment and emergency response plan for the water filtration plant. I guess, Rob, I'll bring it on you again.
Sure, so SEH is already engaged by the city to create the water treatment plan condition assessment. They've been, they've been working on that for the last few months and continue to do so. As, as part of the Americans, America's Water Infrastructure Act, we're required to create a risk and resiliency assessment, followed by an emergency response plan for our water filtration plant. We're recommending that SEH perform these services at a cost not to exceed, time and materials not to exceed $25,600, where they'll, again, assess the, the risks to not only the filtration plant, but to the distribution system, including the lift stations, the water mains, the towers, the plant itself. So they'll essentially assess natural disasters and other unforeseen circumstances and then create a, an emergency response plan to those. And as was mentioned, that the finance committee will make sure that we keep this current with our system as our system changes, we'll review this yearly. And Board of Public Works and Finance Committee both recommend approval of this item.
Yeah, obviously another, another housekeeping issue that we'll need to take care of for a water, safe water plant. And, you know, I'll recommend approval.
Alderman Platner's the motion.
I'll second.
Alderman Pastel is the second. Any more discussion?
So, Rob, that's subject to my review, correct?
Of course.
Thank you.
But we do, yeah, and we do have, we do already have an agreement with SEH, so hopefully they're gonna have the same general conditions and insurance that have already been reviewed. So hopefully it'll be easy for Rick to review, but yes, we'll take that to Rick.
Okay, I just have one question, Mayor.
Go ahead, John.
Rob, is this, is city water part of this contract?
Yeah, that is, I'm not seeing their effort in this, so I think the answer is no, but I have to be honest, I'm not 100%. I'm not 100% positive.
The contract that you're referring to is, includes city water, right?
Yes, yes.
So the prime, prime contractor here would be SEH?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just looking at their, their spreadsheet, it does not look like they're including city, city water on this.
Alderman Sigwar, did you want me to discuss briefly the difference between professional liability, or sometimes called E and O, or errors and omissions insurance, and general commercial liability insurance?
No, what I'd like to have you discuss briefly, and you and I have discussed this a lot. On occasion, our consultants try to limit their liability to their fee, right? We've seen that tried before, okay?
They do, yes.
Question, I guess, is the, they talk in here about increasing the amount of coverage based on $500,000 increments? And that would be, have to increase their fee by 1%? I got lost on that.
Yeah, I haven't reviewed the contract in its, or the proposal in its entirety, but you're right, that provision is in there. And you're right that in general, professionals who provide consulting services to a municipal government, like the city in this case, do try to limit their liability. Typically, what I see is they try to limit their liability to the fee that they're paid for the service that they rendered. So you might have an engineer or an architect who's paid hypothetically $25,000. But if he or she were to, you know, make, make an error, either in their analysis or in the advice, advice that they gave the city, and the city down the line suffered some damage or injury because of it, the potential damage or injury, if you're talking about designing a building, for example, if it all came crashing down, the damages could so far exceed the fee that it, you know, it's just not reasonable or feasible. So the, the approach to the contract formation, part of the equation is to ensure that the professional providing consulting services has enough errors and omissions liability coverage. And, and so we typically resist the proposal to limit their liability, potential liability to the fee that they're paid. That, and then eventually they, we reach compromise, or typically they, they concede it, they concede the point to the city and, and fall back on and rely on the professional liability or errors and omissions insurance that they have. After all, that's the point of having it. I realize no, no insured likes to make a claim against their insurance because one of a couple things will happen invariably, your rates will go up or you'll be dropped as an insured. So I, I get the motivation on the part of the professional, but obviously the, the city and the public have to be protected in the process. In this contract, there is some sort of a hybrid provision, I've not seen this one before, where SEH, what is it, Short?
Short Elliott Henderson.
Them. They, they propose to provide $500,000 of liability coverage for any and all claims. And then if we, the city, for example, want there to be higher limits, for instance, double the limits to a million or triple them to a million and a half dollars of liability coverage, then apparently there's a surcharge of 1%. Again, I haven't, I haven't gotten all the way through it, but I did see a surcharge of 1%.
Right, it's, it's 1% for $500,000 increment?
Yeah, their fee increases by 1%.
My question is, what's our normal limit that we expect?
Well, there, there isn't, there isn't a normal that you can look up or point to, you know, in a publication. We do, I do, and together with Rob and city staff, weigh, you know, the, the value of the thing that is being provided or designed or analyzed or recommended against the potential loss through personal injury or property damage if the whole thing came tumbling down and, and someone was injured, died, or property was damaged because of it. We had a situation recently, I won't name the consulting firm or contractor because, well, I can't recall exactly, I think I know what it is, but I'm not gonna guess and rely on recall. But they wanted to limit their liability in, in just such a fashion to the amount of the fee. But the, the thing that they were designing and proposing to oversee the, the installation of was hundreds of thousands of dollars. And if that piece of equipment failed, the potential consequences to the city could have been catastrophic. So clearly, we weren't going to agree, and we didn't agree, to limit their potential liability in that manner. So these situations are, you know, one-offs, they're unique, depending upon what service is being rendered, the thing that is being designed or built, and the potential losses the city could suffer as a result of any professional negligence. I know that all sounds very general and, and probably hurts your head to think about it, but that's, those are my remarks in that regard.
This is, this is a contract that would be following a existing contract, Rob, right? So I was a little bit surprised to see that phraseology in there because I don't think it was in the original base contract. It's for you to do, Mr. City Attorney.
That is one of the first things I do, is ask myself and then determine whether I've actually reviewed contracts from, from the same service provider or professional. And if I have, I just refer back to that and see if they, in their new or additional contract, you know, have incorporated the changes they previously agreed to. They don't always do that, in fact, I'm surprised. Sometimes they change it up or they just ignore what we spent time talking about previously. So you do have to keep your eye on the ball when it comes to, you know, finalizing and revising these contracts. That's what we do as lawyers, I guess.
If I could, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Everhart, if one of the alders wanted to provide staff with the ability to go up to $5 million, $5 million of coverage, that is, in the motion, there would have to be something kind of to that point, right? So getting to the point of that, well, the contract is $25,600, if I'm not mistaken. To get up to that level of coverage, the contract would have to be increased by $2,304. So that would have to be noted in the motion if there's an inclination to do that, correct?
Yes, because it entails spending of additional monies beyond the contract amount that was approved by the council. On the other hand, when the council, as it often does and has done over the years, entrusts to me the ability to finalize the terms and conditions, I, I do that, you know, within reason, but, but not with, not with the resulting, the city has to spend more money for additional, to pay the professional to go out and obtain additional insurance coverage. I, I wouldn't do that without reporting back. The other, the other danger, of course, is you can over-insure a risk. And so there's a sweet spot that has to be found and agreed upon. You know, what, what should the insurance coverage limits of liability be in relation to the risk presented? So, yeah, it's, it's an art more than a science, but yes, to your question, Mr. City Minister.
John, go ahead.
I'm good.
Okay. So going on and on, we had a motion, correct? Yeah, we had a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So it's unanimous, Susan. Okay, keep going, Jonathan.
Next is consideration of possible action on a proposal from StanTech for the final engineering plan for the Spinnaker West Pond.
Yeah, the, you know, so the title on the report is final engineering, but, you know, ultimately, the recommendation that, that was made by the staff in the, in the Board of Public Works, as well as finance, is to recommend the entire proposal from StanTech, which includes final engineering, construction-related services, landscape services, and grant management for the proposed improvements to the Spinnaker West Dry Detention Basin. This is step one in alleviating flooding, which has plagued this neighborhood along Larrabee Street, west of, well, west as well as east of, of Spring Street. So the purpose of this, this detention pond, as you may recall, is to kind of flatten the, the curve in terms of the, the peak runoff that, that this neighborhood experiences and severe rain events. So we've performed essentially the refined, refined concept analysis. That was step one, which kind of gave us a roadmap towards solving the problems of flooding in this area. Step two was, was preliminary engineering, which was performed on this, on the pond to, to determine what permits were needed, what the soil conditions were, what, what we could get out of this area for storage. And so, and then the findings of that preliminary engineering study, study were presented to the Board of Public Works last week at their, at their monthly meeting. And so this is the, the final element of, of, I guess, phase one. So final engineering and design of the, the dry detention basin improvements to the Spinnaker West Pond. It's, it's followed by construction-related services, final restoration services, education and outreach, and, and grant management. The total price is, again, time and materials not to exceed $189,228. And this is being paid using Save Our Great Lakes, or Sustain Our Great Lakes grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. We have a $400,000 grant, there's a $200,000 local match that's been budgeted by the, by the city for this work to be completed this year, with grant management extending it to the next two years as we monitor the restoration and measure the results. If there's any questions.
Thanks, Rob. For myself, I'm ecstatic that something's finally being done to mitigate the flooding in the Larrabee neighborhood. I'm glad we did this the right way, that is solicitation of grant funding. You know, we were able to get $400,000, which is huge, to start this project off. So I think that the, the wait was well worth it and that we can do this the right way and make sure that everything's covered. I like the fact that StanTech's gonna be working close with city staff to make sure that there's, you know, as Rob said, education outreach, you know, working with John Crane, working with Rob, you know, to get everything set up properly. Just in looking at the schedule, it looks like, you know, between July and November is when this project is set to, to take place. So solicitation of bids will hopefully occur this spring, so we can get that kicked off, StanTech that is, and have this done by the end of the year. So I'm, I'm very excited for this project. Thanks for all your efforts on this, Rob. Oh, I'll move, I'll move to approve.
Motion by Alderman Platner, second was Alderman Gasper.
Yeah, it should be, it should be subject to the review by the city attorney, though, as always. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Rob, I know we don't have a, a current construction cost estimate, but what, what do you expect this project is gonna cost in a way of construction?
The last StanTech estimate on this was, I think, $365,000 for construction. This agreement with StanTech takes some of the landscaping out of it, so I'm, I'm actually anticipating it to be a little less than that. But we'll, of course, have a, an engineer's estimate once the final design's completed. But we do expect it to come in under $400,000. In other words, under our budget of $600,000.
Right, so the, these services are approaching the value of the construction cost?
Well, some of the, yeah, some of the, some of the construction costs are, you know, are contained in here. In other words, the final restoration, the native planting, the plants themselves, maintenance of the plants. But
It appears, without a lot of detailed analysis, it appears excessive. But I know that it's not a typical design. What it is, is a lot of services beyond the design services into construction, into plant, planting and maintenance. I understand that. I didn't analyze this in detail, but I didn't analyze this in detail, but I think the number is $189,228 on a time and expense basis, right?
Yes.
Okay. It only appears excessive, right, Rob? I mean.
Yes, I did go over it line by line with StanTech.
You did?
Because I had, I had the same reaction you did.
Okay.
And.
You were satisfied?
Yes, I was satisfied.
Thank you.
I'm still counting on them to come under this number when it's all done. Yeah, I mean, so far, they've been, I'd say in general, 20% lower than their estimates so far, so hopefully the, the same is true here.
I think, thank you, also goes to Rich from StanTech, right, Rob? He's done a really good job on this all.
Yes, I think they've performed well.
When I come to Public Works and he starts talking, I actually understand what he's talking about, so.
He does a good, he does a good job of explaining.
So thanks also to Rich.
Yeah, and I guess, Rob, I'll echo that with what you and Rich have done. I mean, we studied the problem and, and, you know, based our conclusions on data, yes, we all saw the water in the neighborhood, but, you know, to, to have the flow analysis and know that this has a high, high likelihood of working, it gives me a lot of confidence that this is the right answer. You know, and, and we talked downstairs, you know, push them to accelerate the design work, push them to accelerate the bidding, push them to get the construction going as soon as possible to protect that neighborhood. And, and again, it's not a complete end-to-end perfect solution, but it's way better than what we have today.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous again, Susan. Okay. City boards and commissions, I believe there's nothing there. Unfinished business? Who's taking that one? You can or city attorney?
So that's 9A, review and possible action on resolution 2020-17. Vacation and discontinuance of a portion of East Jackson Street right-of-way from North Lake Street east to termination of the East Jackson Street right-of-way for the Newport Shores project. I wrote to you this afternoon with a work in progress, sort of a marked-up draft of that easement agreement, and it is not in final form. It will be at the next meeting, I'm sure, and hope to present that to you at that time. Fast forwarding, when you get to item 10C, which is not before you at the moment, but to preview coming attractions, I think though, in addition to postponing 9A, this item, you should also consider a motion to postpone item 10C since they relate to each other very, very directly. That is the, the easement agreement as it relates to the vacation of that portion of the right-of-way. I think that they should be handled simultaneously for legal reasons I won't go into, but that's my strong advice. Thank you.
So the postponement would be for a specific date, February 2nd, you hope, or should we?
I, I think it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to postpone to February 2nd.
Okay. Can we have a motion from somebody for that, please?
I'll second it.
Alderman Newmeyer, was it? And then I think it was Alderman Sigur on the end.
Second.
Right. Okay, any discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again unanimous, passes. Moving on to new business. Approval to refer to Plan Commission request to discontinue to a public alley, North Montgomery Street east to the alley.
Okay, I can take this.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, the, the city through Alder, Alderman Newmeyer received a request from an abutting landowner, 414 North Montgomery Street, vacate the credit-only alley that a bunch of her property can run from Montgomery Street east-west to the bisecting alleyway and block. Part of any request to vacate a public right-of-way, it is received by the council, common council, and at their discretion refers this to the city plan commission for review and study and a recommendation back to the commission. And with that, I would just recommend council to refer this matter to the February Plan Commission.
So you're looking for a motion to refer this to the planning commission. Would you have it on the docket for this coming Thursday, Mr. Harris?
Nope, for the February Plan Commission agenda.
Okay. So, that was Alderman Newmeyer. And the second is Alderman Plaidner. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands, okay. All opposed? Susan, unanimous again. Item B, review and possible action regarding the proposed distribution easement underground electric, We Energies' request regarding Newport Shores project. Do we have anybody?
I can speak to it generally, but I, I'll defer to Rob as well. This matter came to my attention from the city clerk who indicated that We Energies' representative, Mr. Douglas Hartman, who is very well familiar to Rob, I'm sure, and myself, as he handles the right-of-way work for the utility, asked for the, asked the city to consider approval of the distribution easement for underground electric service, which is described in the easement document attached to your, included in your council packet. And also, however, there is a map or drawing of the area that would be subject to this. I think it's a 12-foot wide easement that is being requested. I don't know if the map or photo that you're looking at depicts that in yellow highlighting. Are you seeing that? Because I don't know if it copied black and white into the agenda materials, but nevertheless, Rob, are you familiar with this?
Not, not entirely.
Okay, let me, let me, let me hand to you my copy, excuse me.
I remember, Rob, it said that you thought it looked okay to the power company at that time.
And while Rob's looking at that, I'll just add, in fact, we have Mr. McCain, the developer's representative here, maybe you're equally aware of this as it relates to your project? Okay, I was, I was mistaken. Is that ringing a bell, Rob, or?
Well, right, so they're moving, they're moving, now I got to think about this. They're moving, they're moving the transformer, so in order to feed the transformer, yes, they're looking for an easement across the Marina parking lot in order, yeah, essentially in order to feed the new transformer location. And I'm trying to recall, yeah, I'm, right. I guess the, the yellow line in our drawing is so vague, I'm not sure where it goes through. I mean, it, it looks like it runs right through the corner of the building down there. And I question some of this, is, is it even, you know, on city property anymore because it goes through what's, you know, the land swap portions of it?
I, I did notice that and had that same reaction, Alderman Benning, that the highlighting is imprecise at best, I would say.
The matter would not have.
This matter would not have to be approved tonight if the council wishes further clarification of the exact location. But if it does implicate the developers adjoining land, obviously, the developer would have to join in on that grant of easement.
Also, it indicates that the easement gives them the right to construct a transformer at some indeterminate location. I, I think I, before they stick a random transformer down there, I think we'd want to know where that's going to be.
Fair point.
Yeah, that I'm, right, so the transformer location, we, that, that, that I've essentially approved the location of it. So where they're showing it, not so much on, on the walkway, but that, that area that's now parking lot is going to be green, is going to be, wait, no, now I got to think first. Yeah, right, yeah, that's going to be, right, that's going to be green space.
There we go. So this is the first time I've seen this document, and I agree, it's not very precise at all. The logic behind what we're doing is we're going to put it in some of the green space towards that pier. But I, I, I agree, I think we'd like to actually see that so that we're all on the same page. I think that Rob and I, we've walked it, we've communicated on it. I think the location makes sense, and I, I think you all agree once you see some better detail in this.
Thank you, Ian. So maybe the action item for tonight would be a motion to postpone this either to the next meeting or indefinitely until the utility can provide a precise drawing of the location of the transformer and the 12-foot wide easement.
I'd agree. I think we brought for the indef, you know, indefinite postponement because you don't know how long it's going to take We Energies to get back to us, correct?
Does that affect your project, Mr. McCain?
Sure, of course it affects it. So I will work on helping to move them forward.
Good.
But to the mayor's point, there's no control or way to, to force it by two weeks from now, but I will see what I can do to move it forward.
They have a lot of, a lot of staff down there at We Energies, I'm told.
Some of the good staff is retired.
Some are, many are retiring as we speak, but they still have a lot of horses in this table.
To their credit, they had 12 or 14 people out there the day Rob and I walked it and, and located it. So one way or another, I will make sure we get something that's more detailed than this.
Then I will move to postpone. Wait a minute, is it going to be a, a certain date or?
That's why, that's, yeah, that, a, a date to be determined or indefinite date for one?
Indefinitely.
Yep.
Okay, and the second was from Alderman Tierney. Any further discussion? All in favor again, say aye. Seeing unanimous again, I assume there's no opposed. Item C, the city attorney was looking for a postponement on that also.
We postpone this till February 2nd as well, Mr. City Attorney.
Plaidner?
Yes, please.
Then I will move to postpone till February 2nd.
And the second would be?
Second.
I saw Alderman's apostle's hand first, so I apologize, Alderman Benning. Again, all in favor, say aye, raise your hands. All opposed? Unanimous again, Susan. Moving to Alderman Plaidner's, number 11.
Swim lessons, we're doing swim lessons now, we're getting ready for, yeah, so we're, yeah, we're doing it.
Something?
Yes. The fifth annual Port Chili Bowl will be a drive-through. We won't be able to congregate like a bunch of mud minnows along the shore of the river. But when you buy your ticket, it allows you to sample six chilies. And then you get to vote on your favorite chili, blind vote online, okay? And along with that comes a $700 local merchant basket of goodies that you, it comes with your Chili Bowl ticket. I do happen to have a few with me tonight, so stop by. Thank you.
Otherwise, John, where could I obtain such a ticket?
Any one of the venues, that would be Tello's, Java Dock, Beanies, Smith Brothers Coffee, Yummy Bones, or Inventors.
Thank you very much.
John, who won that last year? Was it Yummy Bones?
Last year, I think so. Wait a minute, yes. I just took their trophy back to them, yes.
Okay. Any other forthcoming events? Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I think the, the one notable thing, and this is near and dear to me, is this Friday, we've got the first meeting of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee coming up, so we celebrate this on Martin Luther King Day Week.
So can I ask why the, what the Friday afternoon, why the time and date and time?
Availability of community, committee members.
Okay.
Will it be real or virtual?
It'll be real.
Real here in the chambers.
Of course, everybody's invited. It'll be posted soon, I believe, right? Tomorrow. No more forthcoming events? Public appearances and comments, anybody on the phone or anybody in the audience again for public appearance and comments? I'd like to thank the scouts for coming. They're doing their civil, civic, getting their badges, I assume is what we're doing. So thanks for coming, and I move there right along so you guys can get home. And now you'll enjoy this part. Need a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
They all get the same, Alderman Apostle and Alderman Newmeyer, I believe? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.